Connective tissue disease that affects a patient's immune system by becoming overactive and attacking its own tissues through an overproduction of collagen. And whereas the disease can develop and is found in every age group, but its onset is most frequently between the ages of 25 to 55 with approximately 15,000 Ohioans and 300,000 people in the United States being affected. And whereas scleroderma symptoms can range from very mild to life threatening and can cause thickening and tightening of the skin as well as serious damage to internal organs, including the lungs, heart, kidneys, esophagus, and gastrointestinal tract. And whereas prompt and proper diagnosis and treatment can minimize the symptoms of scleroderma and lessen the chance of irreversible damage as there is no cure at this time. Whereas the Scleroderma Foundation's mission is to support, educate, and advance research to help find the cause and cure for this disease. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Scleroderma Awareness Month in the City of Beaver Creek and urge the citizens of Beaver Creek to support the Scleroderma Foundation and its mission. I'll give that to you and I'm going to let you say a few words because I know you have some.
My wife got a kick at you saying that last year. My wife got a kick out. Who couldn't be with us today because she's at home? We have some work going on at the home and she needs to be there. But thank you, Mayor Adams, and the esteemed members of the Beaver Creek City Council year after year. I really appreciate you and how you helped take on my personal journey and I can't say enough about you. Thank you, thank you very much. Debbie, thank you as always, thank you. As Mayor Adams said, this is the 12th proclamation that they've presented to the Scleroderma Foundation and at the national office in Massachusetts, it is recognized and they thank you as well. This year, once again scleroderma, it means it's personal to me. My mom passed away from scleroderma on Christmas Day in 2004 and Scleroderma Month happens to be her birthday month. She would have, her birthday was on Saturday, believe it or not. So this is very important to our family and very important to the community at large. Every September, last Saturday of the month of September, we have the Bowl for Scleroderma at the Beaver View Bowl. It will be on the 27th of September from 2:00 to 4:00. And it's a great event. It has grown every year since we, since our inaugural event. So I want to say thank you to the community and also once again to the citizens of Beaver Creek and also to the esteemed City Council members and you, Mayor Adams, for helping us spread word and also to market the event. And that's all I have to say. Thank you as always, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have another special presentation. So I'll ask Erin, there she is, to come up here and I'll let you introduce who your guests are today.
All right, I'd like to welcome, you go by Randy and Andreas and Darian up here to represent the Joshi family and their generous donation to our annual Fourth of July event.
Well, up here, this Joshi family supported our Fourth of July event for many, many years and this year is no exception and we appreciate the fact that they've donated $25,000 to our Fourth of July program so that we can have fireworks. This is what really allows us to have fireworks every year and we really appreciate it. And on this note, before you go sit down and I'll give you an opportunity to speak, we've decided we wanted to do something special for the Joshi family. I know we gave you a proclamation last year, but I think a piece of paper like that really doesn't kind of measure up to what you do. So what we're planning to do in the fall is we're going to plant a tree at Rotary Park with a plaque with your family's name on it so that it'll be there basically in perpetuity so that somebody can look at that because we always have fireworks at Rotary Park. So it just seemed appropriate to do it there. And we will invite you out for that planting. In fact, we might let you guys dig the hole.
Well, this has become a tradition to, for my father-in-law that unfortunately couldn't be here. Mayor Adams, that he had a broken foot, so a broken leg, so if he was here, he would be like to hear what you just announced. As I mentioned, it's become a tradition, a tradition becomes, I don't know, for more than 10 years at least. He, my father-in-law called Beaver Creek home for 50 years or more. We have Beaver Creek for 17 years, almost in age than my son. So this is an honor to give you that the City of Beaver Creek money to celebrate Fourth of July. My father-in-law likes to see families get together, happy, smile, and with friends and enjoy the day. So please receive, kindly receive the check and all the City Council and thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to excuse Councilman Duer.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Duer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will turn it over to Councilmember Schwartz.
Could all stand and do the pledge, please? If the Boy Scouts would like to come up, you guys could start lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Y'all could remain standing for just a minute. This probably comes a little bit as a surprise, especially to my fellow council members, that I had a difficult time preparing remarks for this meeting. And as an attorney, we know that that's a rarity, that we are at a loss of words. But with the unrest that's going on around the world and on American soil, I just really had a difficult time preparing my remarks. There are many words that should come to mind when we think about America and democracy that we all enjoy. Some of them we recited just now, like "one nation under God" and "justice for all." Others include sediments such as "United we stand," "a more perfect union," "all men are created equal," "the land of the free and the home of the brave." I could go on with all, with more sediments, but in my absence of words, I will just ask that we all bow our heads and try to find it in our hearts to exercise more grace, compassion, and understanding towards our fellow men and that we may lead and advocate for the fundamental beliefs on which this nation was formed. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have a set of minutes, May 27, 2025, regular meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Move to approve the May 27 meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 27, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
First up, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Resolution 25-12.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as GRE-CR142/CR9. Signal reconstruction, Dayton-Zenia Road and North Fairfield Road signal reconfiguration. Project PID number 123894.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I have three LPA agreements that I'll be bringing up with you tonight. This is the first one. The first one here is for Dayton-Zenia Road. Hold on Pete, something happened there, so.
That must be the Beaver Creek plan there.
Well, Pete's getting that set back up. I'll just kind of give it overview.
Must be the Beaver Creek plan.
This project is a replacement of the existing traffic signal at Dayton-Zenia Road and North Fairfield Road to upgrade that signal to a mast arm type signal from the span wire that we have right now. With that, there will also be some reworking with the curb ramps and the streetscape out in that area to upgrade those to, they're kind of, it's in disrepair a little bit, plus we need to get the curb ramps up to ADA compliance. So that will, the engineering is scheduled to start in 2028 and construction is starting in 2029. And we, okay. So we will not show the slides right now. Oh wait, I see one on the, it tried. So, but, okay, so there are slides that were presented to you in your packet, I believe, that Mr. Landrum had for you. So the first one, like I said, is at Dayton-Zenia and North Fairfield Road. That's about a mile east of us here and that's, yeah, so it's reconstruction of that signal, like I said. So there is a resolution before you to allow Mr. Landrum to enter into that agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the LPA project. So we'll answer any questions anybody has.
Questions?
It'll be approved, resolution 25-12.
Oh, hang on just a minute, hang on, hang on. Got a question?
More of a comment. First of all, it'll be really nice to see mast arms there. It'll be easier on maintenance and everything else. Because this is funded through MVRPC and ODOT, I understand the timeframe is 28, 29?
Yes.
Is there any opportunity to move, move that up in the queue?
That is something we can look at. Mr. Bales is a possibility if the funding's available with MVRPC. Sometimes they have funding that they don't spend all of where they have some overlap where we could potentially move it up.
Excellent, thank you.
Just for my standpoint, one quick question on the left turn there, north and south on North Fairfield.
Okay.
Southbound is just controlled by the left turn signal so you stop when going north. It's a signal plus you can go on green light. Are they going to adjust that or are we going to adjust that or?
For that, Mary, so you're talking going north, how it's got the left and the right turn, is that the one, or are you concerned about the south?
No, it's just the left turn, going north and south on North Fairfield.
Oh, okay, so yeah, just going south. So that was put in, if I remember right, and I'll have Mr. Mormon correct me if I'm wrong. That was originally set up where it did have the left turn, where you were allowed to make that movement during the through movement phase. At one point in time back, I don't know how long ago it was, but it was changed to make it a protected left only because of accidents that we had in that area. So that's the reason for that.
Okay. Because I know there's been some complaints about that and I've gotten stuck there a couple of times myself, so.
Yeah, especially on Saturday mornings, it likes to flip on you.
And there's nobody there and it's, okay, that was just my quick, just, I know we're a ways away from that, but.
Sure, yeah.
Anyone else? Chuck?
Move to approve resolution 25-12, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 25-12. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You get to stay with us. Resolution 25-13.
Resolution 25-13. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as GRE-CR142-0.47. Resurfacing, Dayton-Zenia Road resurfacing project, PID number 123912.
All right. This project is a resurfacing project basically from 675 on Dayton-Zenia Road to East Lynn Drive. This was an area that was widened back in the early 2000s and it's coming due for pavement, redoing the pavement out there. Along with that, there's also a section that was done, one that was widened from Creekside Trail to Southview, Southview Street on Grange Hall Road, so that will also be included with it. It's like Mr. Landrum got it working, so maybe. So there's, as seen on the screen, there's the limits for the, ah, we tried, so, for a second there, so. With that too, so the limits there, yeah, basically like we just showed, probably I'll just kind of go over, I do have the slide, did print the slides out so I can kind of go over what's in the, for the public too. So it's resurfacing, like I said, so it's a mill and fill, so that's mill an inch and a half down and an inch and a half overlay with it. There'll also be some curb and sidewalk repairs with it that are needed out there and ADA ramps will also be brought up to compliance through there as well. So the project history was applied for and received a Surface Transportation Program or STP resurfacing funds in 2024 from MVRPC, which was approved in early 2025. And then I have this, the next step is the LPA agreement, which is before you tonight. Design could start in 2027 where we have it programmed right now in the budget and construction can start in 2029 where we have it in the budget. And this one also, I will say, we have talked with ODOT about trying to move this up because the pavement does seem to be deteriorating quickly, so we want to try to get ahead of that and not have it get too bad, so.
Well, that's a high-speed road, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir.
Oh, brother, they come off of there and it's just like kill, carry, raise away.
Any questions?
Any questions and comments?
I just had a question. When I was looking through, this is just revaving. I thought I read something and I was just skimming through here. I thought when I read through this earlier that it said something about some sidewalk repair too.
There is, Mr. Littoral. There will be panels that will be repaired as needed. I think there's a couple of them that there, there may be some trip hazards that we'll check. I do know at one point we had some heaving after the project was done when I first started here in 2010 that we repaired, but there might be some other heaving issues that we'll be checking as well.
So there's no changing of any of the configurations?
No, no, just be replacement, yes.
And it looks like it, this, the project actually extends all the way down to where the bike path crosses?
It does, that's correct. It'll extend down to Creekside Trail right there. There's a joint right by that crossing right there.
Okay. But it won't affect any of the, it won't change anything at the bike path?
No, it will not.
Okay. That's really all I have.
Along that same line, you know, we have had discussions on Grange Hall Road going north up to the bikeway because of the bike shop that we talked, that got approved and everything else. Has there been any discussions since then about making a bike lane under the?
Yes, Mr. Bales, there was. We actually did apply for funding this round at MVRPC and we were unsuccessful on that project this time. Yeah, so that's one that we'll probably look at trying again this following year, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I motion to approve resolution 25-13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 25-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess you get a turkey tonight, right?
I do.
Resolution 25-14.
Resolution 25-14. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as GRE-SR835 resurfacing.
State Route 835.
State Route 835 resurfacing project, PID number 121845.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor. This is the last project I have for LPA agreement this evening. This project is resurfacing of 835 through Research Boulevard from the bridge that's just south of the off-ramp. Oh, look at, okay, Pete got it up there, so. Yeah, so Pete got it up. So south of 35 odd ramp over to the overpass of 35, so just east of CJ is where this project is. We got, we can see it. So that will resurface that whole section. It's, once again, that's another mill and fill for that area, so an inch and a half mill and then an overlay for it. This project was applied for funding under the STP resurfacing in 2023. We just finished moving through the project scoping with ODOT, so now it's time to move forward with the LPA agreement for this project. Design can start as early as 2026 and it is in the budget or in our budget for 2026 and construction can start for this one in 2027. So Mr. Bales, I know you had asked earlier if there was a way to swap too, and this is one that we've been in discussion with MVRPC to potentially swap out Dayton-Zenia for this one if there's enough funding, just because of the deterioration on Dayton-Zenia, so.
I have a question on this project. On the lovely picture that we saw for five seconds, is there a reason that we don't continue or the resurfacing doesn't go all the way to the intersection or why it stops short of the intersection?
Of the off-ramp or the east side, east of CJ?
Off-ramp.
From the off-ramp. So the off-ramp, so the pavement north of that bridge was paved two years ago, I believe. So that was done then and then this basically picks up south of that bridge because we aren't going to do any on that bridge, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh huh. I will say too, this does connect into the North Fairfield resurfacing project that will be next year. That basically extends from that overpass on 835 to North Fairfield, then it goes from CJ, or excuse me, Newton all the way up to Beaver View, so.
For the benefit of everyone watching and listening, can you explain the benefits of being the local project administrator?
Sure, Mr. Bales, yeah. Yeah, so with this, what we, getting this grant allows us to utilize federal funding for this so we aren't having to pay the whole project with just our own local funds, which is great. I think for this one, I think it was a 20, 80/20 match, if I believe. I'll look here real quick. And I'll get, I'll answer that specifically, Mr. Bales here. So yes, this one was an 80/20 federal match, so that really helps us out with leveraging these dollars to be able to do more local projects or other federal projects as well. The LPA process allows us to do, allows us to manage these as ODOTs represent, basically acting as ODOT for the project so we can do all the inspections, we can do the payments ourselves and not have to run through the other processes that ODOT has if they had it under their contract. So it allows us to utilize the funding that we receive more so to use just for construction instead of construction engineering also, which is inspection, which is nice because that lets us, if we had it with an ODOT let project, we would have to do ODOT inspection and pay for the inspections also. So this way we can utilize our own internal inspectors to do these as well, so.
So the bottom line is all three of these projects, we're getting more bang for our buck by administering them.
Yes, we are, yes.
Move we approve 25-14, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 25-14. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The turkey reference was because of Kelly back there and his bowling tournament, so three strikes, no, but. Well, I guess it's council time. We have a shortened agenda tonight, so we'll get everybody out of here early. Councilman Littoral?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start off by doing the anniversaries. Okay. Yeah, I have it, I have it. All right. This month we've got six from the police department, one with the first year, that's Elena Brown. You have Olivia Zalar for two years, Travis Solers for two years, Tyler Smart Whitting three years, Francesco Trimbali 10. Did I say that right? Okay. I thought she was laughing the way I said it. Scott Mulner, 25. We have three from public service. Chris Earls, 20 years. Got the big numbers here. Todd Snyder, 25. Nick Cornet, 25 years. Parks, got one this year. Steve Croucher, 13 years. Human Resources, Kim Edwards, 38 years. Wow. That's impressive. And our very own Debbie, four years. And with that, I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody, especially the first year and the 38th year. That's something to celebrate. Over the last week, I had the opportunity to go to the, attend, be part of the conversations with council out at the Beaver Creek Golf Course. We had a good turnout. It was the most people I've had at one since I've started doing these. There was nine people there. We had good debates, got a little spicy, but it was fun, learned a lot from the people that were there and where their, where their minds were at. Of course, we brought up, not we brought up, it was brought up to us attending the, the citizens feeling that there's a need for this income tax and trying to get more information out to people to understand the need for it, give them some relief they feel like from property taxes. Also got the opportunity to attend the planning Beaver Creek and wow, I'd be surprised if most people in this room weren't out there. Place was packed with other senior center. It lasted two hours, it lasted every bit of two hours, maybe close to two and a half hours. Great turnout, got good input. It was, it was fun, it was entertaining. Unfortunately, I missed the mayor's event. This happened to be at the same time. Great input. I'm looking forward to our meeting, looking forward to what all that they, how they can put it together for us and we can get some really good information out there. Everybody was providing input and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Kern?
Your Honor, I would just like to comment on the response again from all of the citizens that came to that open house Thursday. That was phenomenal. The number of people was just, that was tremendous. Number two was the amount of conciseness that a number of individuals in terms of looking at things and asking specific questions. And then I saw people sit down and write paragraphs about what did they see Beaver Creek looking like in the years to come. I thought that was just absolutely incredible. And again, I want to congratulate the staff for such a great, great job of promoting and then interacting with the citizens at the Senior Citizen Center. It was just a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo all the sentiments that have already been said, just very excited about the turnout that was at the planned Beaver Creek Open House. Unfortunately, I was out of town, so I was unable to attend, but I've heard that there was tremendous output and just really wanted to echo Councilmember Kern's thanks to staff because this was a purely staff planned event and there was a lot of hard work that went into it. So thank you for that because I think that the input that we got is going to be critical in our path moving forward. I also want to again just thank the Joshi family for their continued dedication to our Fourth of July celebration. Without them, I'm not sure that we would be able to have our fireworks. And so just many, many thanks to them for giving our community the ability to come together and enjoy the celebration. And last but certainly not least, I just have to comment on how And last, but certainly not least, I just have to comment on how quickly time passes. I feel like, Kelly, you were just here yesterday. I cannot believe it has been so long, and I feel like Debbie has only been in here for six months, and it's been four years. And so, just a reminder of how fast time goes, which I'm quickly reminded of with a toddler at home, but in all aspects of life, so cherish your time. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, Mr. Hill, I was going to say, it just amazes me, year after year, you stay for all of these meetings. Fortunately, we have a short one for you tonight, so hopefully we'll get you out of here quickly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd like to say again is thank you to the Joshi family for helping us celebrate the Fourth of July. Thank you, Councilwoman Schwartz, for your time on the Fourth of July Committee, and to all of our staff who makes that such a great event each year, really looking forward to it this year. The Joshi family boys got much taller this year. I think they've exceeded me in my heels, so that's very depressing for me. But otherwise, thank you so much for everyone who helped make that event a success. That's it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three things to talk about tonight. One was, the MVRPC meeting was last week. It was actually a pretty concise meeting. We had an executive committee meeting beforehand where we did the performance appraisal for the executive director. The executive committee all agreed that he's doing a fantastic job for the organization, bringing in money to our region, and did give him a 3% raise for the year. One of the big topics that we talked about, which is really no concern to Beaver Creek at all, was about the Tri-County, Tri-City's watered and sewer department, which is, serves up north in Huber Heights and Van Dally and so forth. They're extending their service area to incorporate some of Huber Heights. So there was a lot of hot discussion between Troy and Huber Heights about that, but it did not impact us, so it passed. And then there was also a presentation about how MVRPC is doing public outreach and a lot of marketing and awareness campaigns for this year. So, it was a good meeting, and I enjoyed it, and I'll do it again next month. I also wanted to add on to what Councilmember Literal said about the community conversations with council. This was the third or fourth one that I've been to. There were nine folks in attendance, so I've been to some smaller and some larger, but what struck me the most was eight out of the nine residents had been Beaver Creek residents for like 30-plus years.
Wow.
It was amazing. It was amazing. Nearly all were very, very supportive of an income tax initiative of some sort. We talked a lot about that. We talked about being specific in our requests, showing some specific reductions where we can in property tax perhaps. And there were, I believe, a couple people on there that were ready to participate in a committee, so I felt it was really beneficial. We also talked about, a little bit about Inside Village from Beaver Creek Township, that was, that came up, so I'm going to get some answers on that. The way that they all got information about the city was through the InTouch, the email, monthly email blast, and Facebook, so I thought that was very interesting. And then one speeding issue came up that we talked about addressing, and I believe that was already forwarded on to the chief, so appreciate that. The last thing I have is I just wanted to thank the mayor for having her first Thursday last week. I wanted to thank Resident Sciences for hosting. The business that they do is pretty amazing, keeping our country safe, and they keep growing, and the things that they're doing there are above my head, but I'm glad they're here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank the Joshi family again for their continued support. It's, it's amazing how this family's really picked up this gauntlet, if you will, and this banner, and run with it. I know he did it when he owned UES, and he's continued it now that he's retired, so we're really, really pleased to have them as part of our community. And speaking of the Fourth of July, it's coming up. Try to come out and see us. The parade starts at 6:00. Then there'll be festivities at Rotary Park that include food trucks, inflatables, and live entertainment, plus be a really good band, and then fireworks. And just remember that it's really difficult to park there, so find a place to park and walk down, so we will get you out of there safely. I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for a new child development center for school-aged children out of Wright Patterson Air Force Base. They just did one for younger kids, and now they want this for the older kids so they, the airmen have somewhere to send their kids. Was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce Lunch Local. It's a program that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce that highlights a local business restaurant, I think it's the first Tuesday of every month. And this week, or this month, they highlighted the hidden gem here in Beaver Creek, the Pizza Dive. If you've never been to the Pizza Dive, I highly recommend it. Go on a Wednesday night when they have their buffet. You'll try some pizzas you've never heard of before that taste really, really good. It's amazing what they come up with. I was able to attend the Blue Star Family Salute and Social at Mills Park Hotel in Yellow Springs. This is an organization that supports the enlisted personnel, military, mostly Air Force, but Army and National Guard. And I would like to thank Resident Sciences for hosting the networking event first Thursday last week at their Andy Rippel location. I'm amazed every time I go in there to see what they're doing for our warfighters, and not just for the military part, but for the civilian part, too. They do, when Mike has started listing off all of the things they do, I was, I was really impressed. It's just, you don't realize they do that much there. This is something that, not as a mayor, but I was asked to help with the Children's Miracle Network this past week, moving families back and forth to the airport. Some of the stories that I heard from these families were just, just amazing, what these kids have gone through, what the families go through, and just what medical science has really done to allow these kids to still be here and do the things that they do. It's just heartwarming and heart-wrenching at the same time. And this coming Tuesday, there's going to be a grand opening for, and ribbon cutting for the Hope Spot Resource Center up on Kemp Road. It's a new thing. I've visited their Zena location. They do support for veterans and families with substance abuse and mental health issues to give them resources and things like that, so if you can make it out for that, it's from 12 to 4:00. And that's all I have.
All right, a quick report that I can't show you, so it's, council members have, have it, a copy of it. First of all, explore Beaver Creek. Join the and explore Beaver Creek Challenge for the chance to win exciting prizes while experiencing everything Beaver Creek, parks and recreation and culture has to offer. I think we put some things out on the website and on social media last week, so a lot of prizes up for grabs, which we haven't announced all of it, but we started asking and donations just rolled in. We were so impressed with donations from the community. So, it's a simple challenge, encourages residents to get outside and get involved, discover all the great things happening in our city. Deadline to complete this challenge and submit your entry is Friday, August 1st, so you have a little bit of time, and learn more about this at beaver creek ohio.gov/explorebeaver creek. Citizens Academy, there's a little bit more time. We have a couple more spots, all we have left, so spots are limited. So this is our third annual, an eight-week course that offers behind-the-scenes access to the city programs. In-person classes, it's going to start August 21st through October 9th, at 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and free and open to residents. Register beaver creek ohio.gov/academy. Summer Concert Series, the second one was last night, third one will be next, so this is through July 27th on Sundays from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Domino LoFino Park, 640 Grange Hall Road. Enjoy sweet sounds of a diverse range. Every week is a different type of sound from rock, blues, bluegrass, country, and more. Bring a lawn chair, blanket, for seating, and view concert lineup series at beaver creek ohio.gov/concert. Fourth of July, of course, with the Joshi family, we definitely appreciate their donations. Without it, this just could not happen, but Fourth of July, come join us, 6:00 PM, the parade starts at Meadow Bridge, going east on Dayton Zena to end at the high school. 7:00 to 10:30, enjoy live music, inflatables, food trucks, and fireworks at Rotary Park, which begin at 10:00. More information, visit beaver creek ohio.gov/FourthOfJuly. And we had a lot of, just a top note of success, we had like three different activities this weekend, from Party on the Patio on Saturday, which I heard are good things, the Princess, Enchanted, 275 to 300 people showed up for that. They had to, kind of caught us off guard on that. We had to change things up a little bit on what was planned, but wow, those kids were excited to see the princesses. And then we had the Concert Series last night, which I heard was very well-attended as well. So, while the weather's nice and not 110 degrees, get out, enjoy your parks and the activities, check out the InTouch or the Digital News Online or Facebook and/or website to see all the activities that are going on. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and I was remiss, I forgot to welcome the Boy Scouts for being here tonight. We thank you for being here. This could have been a lot longer meeting, you probably picked a good meeting to come. We've had some that went a little longer than we expected, so, but we thank you for being here, and we appreciate what you guys do. And at this point, it's time for citizen comments. Anyone that would like to address council on any topic, you have three minutes. Please step forward, give your name and address.
How you doing? Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court, back again. Councilwoman Bales, you gave a very good analysis of the meeting that we had over at the golf course. Thank you very much. Only thing that I did, would like to have seen would be minutes taken. I don't know if that's something that we could look at in the future, but your notes seemed to be pretty thorough, and I appreciate that more than you can imagine. All right, the other thing that I am concerned with was the zoning in the land use plan meeting, or open house that they had. It didn't meet the statement of what it was going to have, there's no contractor there. I did go, I did attend, and I did try and ask some questions. I've got very few answers, and some of the individuals that were standing at each of the different sections did not or could not answer, so I don't know, but that's, that's a deficiency that we need to look at also. The thing that I was concerned with is on the pictures and the choices and everything else. It seems like this council or groups, when they set something like that up, they, they give it a forced choice, meaning to say you like this one, or this one, or this one. There is no way for individuals to put down, do not want this particular stuff like that. So there should be a block underneath those things that give people a chance to say, high-density housing or something along those lines. If people are against it, they need to be able to vote and put that on there, because the stuff that you see now, it just, what people like, but there's no opportunity for anybody to put anything that they don't like. So, that is, and I would be willing to work with the council or the committees or whatever to discuss that shortfall, but I need you folks to be aware of that. And I've said my piece tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the citizens' portion of the meeting, and I think we have a motion.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the sale of property at competitive bidding or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property, and a conference with the city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia? Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Literal?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Yes. We will be in executive session. No motions or decisions will come from this, so in effect, this closes the meeting. We will come back to adjourn, but there, that's all it'll be is an adjournment, so in effect, the meeting is completed. So, thank you all for being here.